We're all here. And this Cantino's here. Whoever's here will be here. No, no, you're good. All right, welcome everyone. I call the meeting to order. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocation by Pastor Steve Burgson. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. Let us pray. Almighty God, as a nation, we've just moved through Thanksgiving and we give you thanks for the blessings of being citizens of this community and citizens of this great country. We ask your continued protection upon the men and women who serve us, especially in the armed forces, and those who are in very hostile and dangerous places. We pray that you'll bring them home safely. In order tonight, we lift up our town council and ask that you would give them wisdom and discernment as they deliberate and make decisions that affect our community. We ask all this in the name of the one whose birthday we celebrate in three weeks. Amen.
Amen. Thank Pastor Burgson from Shepherd Hills. Roll call please, Bob.
Mayor Schlumpf?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dickie?
Yes.
Councilmember Elke?
Here.
Councilmember Brown is absent. Councilmember Leger?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson is absent. Councilmember Cantino?
Here.
All right, thank you very much. No mayor's support and no public appearances tonight, so we'll go right on to call to the public. Anyone with called the public at this time?
Yes, Mayor Steve Fleming.
All right. Mr. Fleming, how are you?
Doing very well.
Good. You've got three minutes. You probably know the drill. There'll be lights here and we thank you for coming before the council.
My pleasure. Just have an offer for you, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. Steve Fleming has lived here in the town for 11 years and tonight I'm representing the Sonoran Conservancy of Fountain Hills, your trail builders in the preserve. We would like to make an offer to the town that the conservancy be allowed to adopt the Fountain Overlook Trail and to provide regular routine maintenance on the surface. It's a beautiful trail. It's in need of a lot of work. We recognize budgetary and personnel constraints and we feel that it's consistent with our mission here in the town to do such things. So I realize during call to public you don't respond, but I would ask you, consider it and hopefully accept our offer to accept the trail or to let us adopt the trail and maintain it on a regular basis. So that's all I had to say and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Have a good day. Are there any additional details you need to get to staff or council to consider it or is it just that simple what you meant?
It would be that simple. I have talked with Mark Mayor and Brian Hughes conceptually and they think it would be wonderful, but I really wanted to offer it to the council and to the town as a whole.
All right, thank you very much.
You bet.
All right, move on to the consent agenda. Got two items on tonight's consent agenda. I'll go over those. First one's consideration of approval of resolution 2011-46, abandoning whatever right title or interest the town has certain portions of public utility and drainage easement located at the rear property plot 602-A, block one, lot 28 on Cavern Drive, 15626 East Cameron Drive, as recorded in book 161 map of maps, page 42, records of Maricopa County, Arizona, case number EA 1106 Hollister. And number two on the consent, consideration of approving agent change, acquisition of control liquor license application submitted by Gaspar Mano, owner agent of Seculi LLC, doing business they have Sapporo Di Italia located at 11865 North Suero Boulevard, Fountain Hills, Arizona. This is for a series 12 license restaurant license. Can I get a motion to?
They'll move.
All right.
Second?
Second. All in favor indicate by, oh, I'm sorry, roll call on the consent.
I just had one question perhaps from staff.
Yep.
I noticed on consent agenda item one, the staff's recommendation is approval of the resolution with a particular stipulation in there. So is, I might understand then that the motion would include that particular stipulation in there as well.
Andrew, do we need to do anything special with that?
Mr. Mayor, if it's included in staff report, it's included with the motion, but it certainly doesn't hurt to mention it at the motion right now.
All right, along with the item one and two, there's two items on consent. Just specify the stipulation or just simply state with the stipulations. So we have a motion to move on item number one and two, one with the stipulations. And a second? Roll call.
Vice Mayor Dickie?
Aye.
Mayor Schlumpf?
Aye.
Councilmember Leger?
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Mayor Five Zero?
All right, thank you very much. Move on to the regular agenda items and we're gonna start out with some appointments for some commissions. So thanks to everybody that has applied and we have quite a few to appoint tonight. And thank you for many of you for your continued service and those new ones for jumping on board and participating in the town at a, on a commission level. And when I'm done with these, if there are any folks that are here that have been appointed, please, we'll look for you to stand up and we'll thank you. We'll go through them all here first. Look for item three, first item on the regular agenda is consideration of appointing four citizens to serve on the Senior Services Advisory Commission for a two-year term. Terms beginning January 1, 2012, ending December 31st, 2013. I'll look to appoint the four people would be Bill Whitaker, Grace Jacobs, Sherman Abramson, and Barbara Patterson Whitehead. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor Five Zero?
Thank you very much. And item number four is consideration of appointing one citizen to serve on the Community Center Advisory Commission for a two-year term beginning January 11, 2012, and ending December 31st, 2013. On the Community Center Advisory Commission, I'll move to appoint Bill Mulhouser. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any speaker cards?
No, sir.
All right, any speaker cards on any of the?
No.
Commissions? All right, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number five, consideration of appointing three citizens to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission for a two-year term beginning January 1st, 2012, and ending December 31st, 2013. And I move to appoint Natalie Varela, Greg Wu, and Ron Rupert. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mayor Five Zero?
Thank you. All right, item six, consideration of appointing three citizens to serve in the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission for a three-year term beginning January 1st, 2012, and ending December 31st, 2014. I look to, I move to appoint Bill Craig, Bill Myers, and Elena Torre. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mayor Five Zero?
Thank you. And last commission to appoint tonight is item number seven, consideration of appointing two citizens to serve in the Public Safety Advisory Commission for a two-year term beginning December 1, 2011, and ending October 31st, 2013. I'll move to appoint Lyle Edwards and Carol Pomito. Do I have a second? Good, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor Five Zero?
All right, thanks a bunch. And who's here? Anyone here? I thought, there's Lyle. Hey, Lyle, how are you? Thanks for reapplying. Thanks for being here. And again, to everybody that applied or perhaps were not selected, there are a great deal of other opportunities and we appreciate you applying very, very much for your town that you love. Move on to the next item on the regular agenda, it's item number eight, and we'll have one report for items eight and nine. We have public hearing requests for a special use permit to allow the installation of golf ball net at 10406 North DeMarrett Drive located in the R1-8 RUPD zoning district. So open up the public hearing on this item. Welcome Bob.
Thanks Mayor, council members. This is application for a special use permit to install a 25-foot tall golf net along the side and rear property lines located at 10406 North DeMarrett Drive. This is an aerial photo showing that the property is located on the south side of a slight dogleg at about the middle of the 11th fairway at the Desert Canyon Golf Course.
That looks great Bob.
Anyway, that's where it's located. There are a number of large trees also behind the house that were presumably placed there in order to deflect air and golf balls, so the hazard was appreciated early on. Wait a minute, I suppose.
You also have a new packet online.
Yep. Load those at home can see.
Does the projector have to be turned on? Have you ever known how to turn the projector on?
Yes.
Oh, it is on. It's coming on.
Just take a moment for the ball to warm up.
Thank you very much.
Our technical crew has arrived. So as far as nets go, it's a really nice looking net. The third slide in your, in your package shows a blow up of the property, shows a location of the fence and it, as it appears on the west side. And it may have been constructed on the abutting property. That has yet to be determined. And that's also noted in the town engineer's memo, which is part of your packet. I also provided you with some slides, some photos showing the net. Again, it's 25 feet tall, it's black mesh with black poles, been installed along the fence line, is actually attached to the fence lines in a number of places. The zoning ordinance outlines six criteria that must be met for a special use for a golf net. And staff has reviewed those and believes that four of them have been met. The two that have not been met, taking the easiest one first, is that the poles are black. They need to be painted to match the house. And that's an easy fix and the applicant who I believe is not present tonight stated that they would be happy to paint them to match the house. The harder fix was the fence is required to be set back at least 25 feet from the side property line or have written consent from the abutting property owner to be closer than 25 feet. In this case, it was installed without review or a permit. The fence appears to staff to be very likely to be on the neighbor's property and in any event, the neighbor has not indicated any kind of consent for it to be even closer than 25 feet. So that would have to be one of the stipulations to have that item taken care of. Also, the town engineer's report noted that the rear fence was installed within a public utility easement and the applicants will have to address that through either the encroachment process or the abandonment process with the various utilities involved. So there are outstanding issues with the location and construction methods used that must be addressed in order for the fence to remain where it is. And in the interest of safety of the residents, six specific stipulations were recommended by staff and the planning commission to address those. I've got it now finally. You can ask me to go back if you, we're on the last slide. Staff has recommended that the council approve the special use permit subject to the stipulations. The stipulations may very well create a situation that the applicant just can't meet them, in which case the fence is gonna have to be moved or removed, but we wanna give them a chance just in case there is a real safety danger in the backyard. Thank you.
Well, thanks Bob. Andrew, at this point, do we ask for a public comment during the public hearing or do we wait till the next item?
Right now.
All right, is there anyone public on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right, thanks. Now we'll close the public hearing, go on to consider, number nine, consideration of special request, special use permit to allow the installation of a golf ball net at 10406 North DeMarrett Drive as just presented. Are there any speaker cards on item nine?
No, sir.
All right. Thanks Bob. Council, questions on this item? Councilmember Dickie or Vice Mayor Dickie?
Thank you Mayor. Thanks Bob. If they hadn't just asked permission before they started building it, what would the process have been? Would there have been more public notice to the neighbors and that kind of thing? I'm trying to figure out what's been skipped by the fact that it already exists.
Well, they didn't get a building permit to put it up. The encroachment into the utility easement would have had to been taken care of before they could have installed it. Having the fence within 25 feet of the property line, of course, we had to have the property, the adjacent property owner's permission to be that close. And then this public hearing for the special use permit would have also had to have taken place.
So Mayor, then a public hearing would have taken place before it was put up?
Correct.
Likely. At this point, do you know if any of the other neighbors beside the one that has already contacted us has indicated any sort of concern?
I haven't gotten any indications from any other neighbors.
So Mayor, and maybe this for Andrew, are there any grounds to deny something like this if all the conditions are met, those six conditions, like if somebody had asked us for it and all of that stuff? Is there any, do we have any discretion at all?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor, Vice Mayor Dickie, the special use permit process is more like akin to a land use decision like a zoning or other consideration. It's not necessarily like a subdivision requirement that's a check the box that you don't have any discretion on. I think you still do have discretion, but when you go to the extent of putting out the conditions that are in the zoning ordinance, I think it takes discretion down a few notches as long as all of those are met. And you could probably, if someone met all those conditions and you still denied the permit, you could be challenged with being arbitrary and capricious, which is the standard that's applied to most administrative actions. So I think that in a typical special use permit, the discretion starts at the highest level and then the more administrative you make the process, the less discretion you have. So this is one where you've made it fairly administrative at this point.
Thank you Andrew and Mayor. Then, and the other thing that you can't get away from trying to make this kind of decision is the fact that it's already there. So I regret that it's already there because I think it takes a little bit out of the, a little bit more of the discretion out of the discussion. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Leger?
Mayor, if I may address Andrew. Andrew, typically if the applicant followed the process and applied for a special use permit, there would have been a posting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Leger, under the zoning ordinance, there's a process for posting property, public hearing, just like we do with any other change of land use.
I understand that, I just wanted to clarify that. So, thank you Andrew. Mayor, I'm gonna address Bob. So as we look at these conditions, which I think kind of put things back on the straight in terms of going back and following the process, making sure it's not in the right way, that it's, the most serious one here is possibly on the neighbor's property. I'm curious as to why we don't have a condition in there to put a posting in there in that we're going through the process, that being required to go through the process in terms of applying for the permit and so forth and so on, to give folks an opportunity to object because this kind of happened under the radar, radar screen and obviously the neighbor was aware of it because more than likely it's obtrusive to their property as indicated in their letter of complaint.
Correct. Just to, so that it's clear, we did do a posting for this meeting, for this public hearing and we did send out abutting, buttered letters to the properties within 300 feet of the property. So this was, we followed that permitting process. The building permit and the, and the utility encroachment are not that type of a hearing. They don't have hearings like that. They're just, but this was legally posted and advertised.
Very good. That, that takes care of it then, thank you.
Councilmember Elke?
This would probably be directed more to Andrew. Andrew, stipulation number six, as it relates to the other stipulations, it says applicant shall satisfy all stipulations within one year of the town council approval or if unable to do so, remove the fence. Now I know there's, within there, there's the other stipulations that if they're not complied with within 90 days, they need to remove the fence. Could that be interpreted mean that you have a year to comply with everything and if you don't, the stipulations meaning one through five, and if you don't comply, you have, you know, you have to remove the fence, but you have up to a year to do so?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Elke, I'm not sure what the intent was of having a different timeframe on the termination. I think that 90 days might be a little bit troublesome if some of them weren't able to get all the approvals to have the fence removed, but the gap between 90 days and one year, was that intended just to remove?
The intent behind the planning and zoning commissions, two stipulations were that they wanted to get the applications for the, for the building permit and for the encroachment permit in soon, but they didn't know how long it would take for that encroachment permit especially to go through the process, so they wanted to give them enough time to get that finalized one way or the other before they just, all right, timed it up, take out, take down the fence.
I just have concerns as far as it being conflicting, because you could read it in a way to say, well, I've got a year to apply for and receive my building permit for the fence and any fees and penalties to be applied, which was that condition one.
Condition five, I think, is what, what I'm talking about. They wanted to at least get the application in within 30 days.
Okay.
So that they knew that the process was going. If those two conditions are worded incorrectly, I'm happy to recommend a change.
I just think it's a little conflicting, it's on, it may be a little unclear.
Okay.
That's, that's the only concern I would have with that. And Bob, do you know what the, what the penalties would be that this homeowner would be paying as a result of putting this fence up without the permit?
I believe the building permit will be double cost, whatever that ends up being. I'm not sure if it's based on the length of the fence. The fence itself, of course, was not an inexpensive item to have, to buy or put up, so obviously that cost would be.
So the fee as far as the town, the building permit fee would be double the cost for the permit. What about penalties? Are there penalties associated with that as well?
That's pretty much the penalty, the double cost.
That is the penalty?
Yeah.
Okay. Right, can you identify, Mayor, if I may, can you identify what the three items in the engineer memo are dated 10/25/11?
Ah, yeah, the engineer noted the three items. One was to get the building permit, the other was the encroachment permit, and the third was to resolve the possible trespass issue with the fence on the neighbor's property. You should have that report also in your packet.
You can, we can have a larger discussion, Councilmember Elke.
Right.
Bob, just to clarify, obviously the fence is, I would assume not likely to get approval from the neighbor. I'm not sure if that's the neighbor that wrote the letter.
Actually, it's not.
Oh, it's not? So perhaps they get approval to keep the fence at least close to the property line, but perhaps even on the other property?
When they came to the planning and zoning commission, the applicant indicated they were gonna contact that neighbor and ask for that permission.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything.
So that neighbor could approve and the fence, if it's not on the other property, could in fact stay where it's at? But it's likely on the other property?
Right. If it's on, if it is actually on the applicant's property, it could stay if the other neighbor and the council agree.
But it's likely on the other property?
It appears to be.
That was the engineer? So would the fence then have to be moved?
It has to be moved.
Okay.
It has to be on site.
At least that, or that post or whatever posts that are there would have to be moved?
I think I can show you the pictures here.
Or, yeah, or the other neighbor could take out a fence. Would benefit him, would only block there. Okay, so.
It's actually this fence line right here, so it'd be, these three poles would have to be moved inwards. This is the neighbor's property that it's probably on.
The three of the five poles would have to be moved likely. And then the other two poles, actually?
The other two poles are an easement.
Three poles are in the, in the, in the public right of way.
It's a public utility easement.
Public utility easement. And they'd have to get approval of the public utilities that have the right to use that easement?
There are six utilities that have to agree.
Are there utilities there?
I don't believe any of them are actually there. There may be a sanitary line in there, I'm not sure.
It just seems like the whole fence will have to be moved. It's what, it pretty much appears that, maybe we just start from scratch here and the whole, the whole fence needs to be moved. So the cost to the owner is gonna be, have to dig up whatever footings they dug and move the entire fence and.
The owner indicated that if they do have to move it back that 25-foot setback, it's gonna be, it's gonna render the fence location basically useless for the purpose of blocking golf balls, is what they, what they said last time. So they would probably just have to remove the fence completely. Wouldn't, wouldn't be any good to them.
Obviously, the fence is built, didn't talk to the neighbors or didn't get approvals that were required, didn't talk to the town, didn't take out the building permit, just put up the fence. It seems like we could have the fence taken down because it's likely gonna have to be moved anyway and then just start from, start the process over as it should, it should've been done from the first place. Is there any challenge with that Andrew? I mean.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think that there's, he absolutely has his own violation, violation of a number of different things, including blue stake. I mean, there's, there's blue stake law that requires you to notify the utilities before you dig into their easements and this one has that problem as well. So I think that, you know, a complete redo, if, if the property lines are established as we think they are and that they're actually encroaching on the neighbor on one side into a utility easement on the other side, the only one that has any chance of not being moved is the one in the utility easement if it's consented due by the utilities there as well as town, obviously. So I think there's a chance that this fence could stay partially where it is and only have to move what's essentially three-fifths of it, but I think there's, there's not much chance of it if it goes into the neighbor's property. I think Councilmember Elke had an interesting potential compromise of having the neighbor actually get a special use permit for the fence as well and have the two overlap. It's, it's a creative approach, something I hadn't really thought of before, but it might be a possibility as well. I think that's why the one-year time period here is pretty important. And I think all of this is based upon the town's willingness to not enforce the violations of numerous different codes that have occurred because of the fence being constructed without any notice permits or anything else. So I think if you start with that basis and you're okay getting there, then we can work on fix it for all the rest of the way through.
Yeah, I just don't wanna, if we're ultimately gonna approve something there with stipulations and there isn't a great deal and need to move a fence, then, then maybe I wouldn't consider what I had mentioned earlier, but it sounds like the fence is gonna have to be moved. So if it's out of compliance now and it shouldn't have been put up, it's gotta come down anyways, take it down, go through the entire process appropriately, make sure it's on your property or work with your neighbor if they wanna assume the liability of a fence on their property that doesn't protect them, except for people playing golf course backwards, then perhaps you'd do it. But council, you guys are far smarter than I. Councilmember Elke, the stipulations is there, they're there, do you think that does enough? Do you think that those are appropriate? Councilmember Leger, Dickie, Cantino, you think we're all right there?
What I think is, I mean, basically by setting the stipulations that we have here is we're effectively requiring the homeowner to put it down or tear the fence down or remove a substantial portion of it. You know, I'm very much in favor of doing things as easily and straightforward as possible. I don't want staff wasting their time with this homeowner going back and forth. Did you get any indication, Bob, from the homeowner that they would be willing to follow these stipulations or any indication either way?
Yeah, they, they stated at the planning and zoning commission that they were perfectly willing to go through this process and try to get those, those approvals.
I mean, I'd be in favor of allowing the homeowners to, I mean, with that being said, for them to try and get this done and certainly work with their neighbors. And we're asking basically for them, as you said, one of the stipulations there was for them to solve the trespass issue or the potential trespass issue with their neighbor. We're basically asking them to determine the town's requiring a homeowner to go to their neighbor and get approval, I guess, to be on their land. Is that a line?
No, they're gonna have to get a surveyed line there to make sure where that line is and if they are in fact across the line, then it doesn't matter if they're on the other property, they're gonna have to move that section of the fence.
Or Councilmember Elke, another angle is we're saying we can't approve a fence on somebody else's property with permit from the other property.
Yeah, that's the thing. I mean, where are we exactly at on this? Are we saying, go ahead and follow these stipulations and you're fine? It just seems very, it's obviously a big mess. It's not something we created, I understand. It would be interesting if they could get with their, their neighbor and submit a joint permit. Is that something that you could potentially see, Bob, if they submitted a second, the homeowner submitted another permit, so it's a joint?
It's possible. I haven't heard from the neighbor, so I'm not even sure if they're worried about golf worried about golf balls.
Sure.
I think that is something that could potentially work. They have to get the waiver for the twenty-five-foot from the property, from the other property being protected. But in the end, Bob, if there are no, nothing done by anyone, what, where are we left? If nothing's done, it just stays up there and no steps are taken, or not enough steps?
Then we would have to have code enforcement tell them to take it down.
Okay. All right, council members, are we, yeah, Councilor Leger?
Just a point of clarity. I don't want to belabor this much longer. If the neighbor gives permission to have the fence on their property, you just stated it would still have to be moved?
Either that, or, as the mayor had suggested, they'd have to come in with a joint application for both properties.
I guess my question is, why even go through the academic exercise of asking for permission when it doesn't have any impact on the fence staying?
Well, if the fence is in fact on their own property, it's just that this overlay of property lines may be off.
So the survey is the key.
The survey is the key. Even so, if it's within twenty-five feet, they still have to get the neighbor's permission.
And, Mayor, if I may, Andrew, you felt that a year was a good time period?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Leger, I think that based upon the number of things that have to happen, particularly the six utilities that have to grant consent to be in an easement, it's going to take a long time to get it done. I don't know if a year, it seems like a long time now, but I don't know if it really will be a long time when they have to go through those hoops. In the meantime, though, it'll be up for that year. I think the mayor's point is...
Well, that's what concerns me. Would six months be more realistic, or you don't think it could occur in that time period?
I think six months is, six months or a year probably won't be materially different. I think if you can't get it done in six months, that means you have a utility that's resisting granting the permission to be in the easement, more likely than anything else, or a neighbor who's resisting granting permission.
We have a fence that was installed illegally, without permits, and is impinging perhaps on someone else's property. It's trespassing. There's an issue with the easement. We also have a complaint from a neighbor who feels that it aesthetically devalues their property value. It just kind of concerns me that we're going to condone all this illegal behavior and create a year's period to inconvenience a citizen who has their rights as well, who wrote a very clear letter and a rationale for their situation. I'm not sure I can support this, I guess, at this point, is my point. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilor, Dickey, you're right, Mayor.
Thank you. So if we didn't, and they had to take it down, what would be the timeframe on that? Like, how long would that take?
Under the current recommendation, there's a drop dead one year.
No, if we didn't approve the...
Oh, if you didn't approve it, we would tell them to take it down. They have to take it down. We usually give them about thirty days.
Okay. If we went through, I mean, just, you know, going through these, I guess if you had asked before the meeting if this would be this much conversation, I think you'd get a big no. But if we go through each one of the, just each stipulation, the first one says, property owner shall apply for and receive a valid building permit for the fence. All fees and penalties shall apply. I think we should set a time restriction on that, perhaps thirty days for them to apply for that. I don't think that would be too timely, so I think that should be added to it. The second one is, property owner shall comply with the three items contained in the town engineer's review memo dated ten twenty-five eleven. Bobby had gone over some of those, and one of those included not being within twenty-five feet of the property line. Is that correct, Bob?
Yeah.
That's at least one of them. So I think the solution potentially to that is you move the fence, or you get maybe a joint permit. I think that's really the only thing that's going to solve that particular issue. They're going to have to remove that section of the fence. I think we should have a deadline on that as well, perhaps give them the ninety days that we did in the other criteria, on the other stipulations. The third is, property owner shall take the necessary steps to comply with Fountain Hill zoning ordinance, golf fence criteria, see within ninety days. Excuse me, I think that's the twenty-five feet, isn't it, Bob?
Yeah.
Stipulation three, or three?
Correct.
So again, going back, that should be as it is within ninety days, and then they shall paint the poles within ninety days or remove the fence, and then shall file necessary applications within thirty days, if not remove the fence. I think the first two conditions we should set, perhaps with the first one, a thirty day for them to file for the building permit, and then the second one, perhaps give them ninety days, and then remove stipulation six, so that we have a deadline date as far as them complying with that of ninety days to get this done, so it's not hanging out there for a year. So then you don't take item six and say, I've got a year, the council said I have a year to apply for and receive my building permit for the fence, or I've got a year for item number two, which is to comply with those items. I think that would be a little more clean, and it certainly gives better direction as far as the homeowner's concerned.
Okay. And ninety days is the outside, so I'm not sure if they can get the ninety days on the, the public utility easement waivers, but...
It'll take them six months.
Six months is probably...
I mean, if that's, if that's more realistic timeframe than one hundred and eighty days?
The town engineer just indicated that six months is probably reasonable for the utilities.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Any other, thanks, council member. Do you want to make that in the form of a...
I'll make a motion.
Motion?
Okay, motion to approve a special use permit to allow the installation of a golf ball net at one zero four zero six North Demerit Drive, subject to the stipulations contained in the staff report with the following amendments to those stipulations. As to stipulation number one, that they apply for and receive a valid building permit. Bob, is that something that could be done within thirty days? Apply for, do they need, is that something that we'd need the one hundred and eighty days for?
No, thirty days is more than enough time.
Okay. So I would say stipulation, apply for within thirty days is to stipulation one. Stipulation two, comply with the three items contained in the town engineer's review memo dated ten twenty-five eleven, within one hundred and eighty days. And then stipulations three, four, and five remain the same, and remove stipulation six.
Yeah, five still states they would remove the fence, so I think that covers it. Six had included that as well, so did the other ones. All right, we have a motion with the stipulations. Do we have a second?
After all that.
Come on. Do we have a second? And then discussion?
Second.
You second?
Well, sure.
Okay. All right. Anyone from the public on this item? I think I already asked for number nine. Okay. All right, council, any more discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
So we're talking a maximum of six months now.
Correct.
Okay.
But they do have to come in quicker to address the other items, and most of them within ninety days. And obviously, if they can't do it within ninety days, then the...
They're going to have to remove the fence within ninety days if they don't comply.
All right.
Councilor Leger?
Just a point of clarity. So we're no longer inconveniencing the neighbor for a year in your amended motion, and also you made it more rigid in terms of the permitting process, which will even expedite the removal of the fence if those conditions are not met. And I stated earlier, I couldn't support this because of that lengthy time period. I'm not sure if I can ask this question, mention this during this part of our amendment, but I'm just curious. In the letter from the neighbor that objected to this, they made an interesting observation that even with the pool, even with the existing fence up, I know this is insane, having this conversation as lengthy as we are, but even with the fence up, golf balls are still coming onto that, onto that property, to the extent that the renter, because it's a rental home, had to put up a secondary fence inside to protect the pool. So this is, this whole thing is rather bizarre. Did anyone do a site visit, or are we making our decisions based on aerial photographs with respect to property lines, et cetera?
I was on site.
Okay. As I noted, there was a comment here about based on aerial photographs. It was hard to determine X, Y, and Z.
You know, the aerial photograph, actually, I have it up now, shows you the property line. That's, and sometimes those property line overlays over the aerials at the county are not quite right. That's why we're...
That's why I asked, yeah.
They have to do a survey under this.
Right.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments on the motion and second? All right. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor five zero.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Bob. All right. Next item, also highlights, Bob. We'll have a presentation on items ten and eleven. First item is public hearing on special use permit for Verizon Wireless, allow installation of twenty-six-foot tall stealth cellular swirl cellular antenna array at ninety-eight-hundred North Summer Hill Boulevard, located in the R-one dash six A slash resort zoning district case SU two thousand eleven dash zero six. And then item eleven will be consideration of special use permit for the Verizon tower. So we'll go into a public hearing now. And, Bob?
Thank you, Mayor. The proposal is to place the tower on the Inn at Eagle Mountain's property, west of the Eagle Mountain Golf Course Eighteenth Green, and it will be adjacent to the existing T-Mobile Saguaro Tower. Site plan shows that the tower will be located along the driveway to the inn and very near the other tower. The equipment will be walled and look like the existing equipment area. Parking and accessibility are good. Tower will be twenty-six feet tall. This is nine feet shorter than the existing thirty-five-foot tall Saguaro Tower, and it will be designed to look like a Saguaro cactus. Zoning ordinance outlines eight factors to consider when you're granting this type of a special use permit. Staff has reviewed them and determined that two factors are ostensibly not met. The first one is if the tower is within three hundred feet of the residentially zoned property, a special use permit is required. This is in a residentially zoned property, and that's why we're here tonight for this special use permit hearing. The second one is the surrounding foliage is natural desert landscaping, and it could benefit from some additional plantings, and that's one stipulation the staff has recommended as well. Planning and zoning commission forwarded a recommendation to approve this proposal, and staff recommends that council also approve the special use permit subject to the stipulations in the staff report. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone from the public on public hearing?
No, Mayor.
All right, we'll close the public hearing, go on to item eleven, consideration of special use permit for Verizon Wireless, allow the installation twenty-six-foot tall stealth Saguaro cellular antenna array at ninety-eight-hundred North Summer Hill Boulevard as presented. We get a motion to accept this?
Accept it, motion.
All right, do we have a second?
Second?
All right, anyone from the public on item eleven?
No, sir.
All right, any questions for Bob on this item, or anyone else? Discussion? Councilor Leger?
In the staff packet, I did not see any letters objecting to this. Did you get any complaints by phone?
I didn't get any interest at all from the...
Thank you.
All right, good. All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor five zero.
All right, thank you. Item twelve, consideration resolution two thousand eleven dash thirty-eight, amending the development agreement between Town of Fountain Hills and Fire Rock Plaza. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor and council. In two thousand and six, the town and the owner of the Fire Rock Plaza, Fire Rock Plaza LLC, entered into a development agreement. It required that the, that the Fire Rock Plaza complete the offsite improvements, which included a sidewalk that you can see in yellow. It goes past the wash to the property line with Circle K, and they were also to install a traffic signal at the entrance. Since the Fire Rock Plaza LLC, they lost the property to the bank, and it's currently owned by Wells Fargo. Their current, the current location is where the urgent care facility is. There are ten suites in the plaza. Four have certificate of occupancies and six do not. Wells Fargo contacted the town because they are marketing the property for sale, and we have been contacted by a local real estate agent and as well as one from California interested in the property. We informed Wells Fargo that we would not issue any certificates of occupancy until the requirements are met. Originally, they, Wells Fargo wanted to reimburse the town one hundred thousand dollars to basically consider all the offsites as being complete. The town does not have an intention of putting a traffic signal there. It was something that the original developer wanted, and then the town said, if it meets warrants and you pay for it, you can put the traffic signal up. Right now, there is not a need for a traffic signal, so we are recommending that this agreement takes away that requirement, but also adds that in the future, if they do request a traffic signal, that the owner will need to pay for it. There is a cross-access easement agreement between the Fire Rock Plaza and what is currently the Shea East Plaza, just to the east towards the B-line. They have an agreement in place that says Fire Rock Plaza will pay for sixty percent of a traffic signal, and the Shea East Plaza would pay for forty percent of a traffic signal if one is ever installed. So what we are looking at is, we negotiated with Wells Fargo, we had our engineer look at the cost of the sidewalk, and then we would require them to put in conduits if a future traffic signal were to go in. We determined that design and construction would be approximately two hundred thousand dollars. Wells Fargo has agreed to pay that, and then our Shea and Saguaro project, which is that eighty percent design, it will bring the sidewalk, which is in the pinkish color, down to the end of Circle K, and then we would change order of the design and construction of the sidewalk and traffic signal conduit that Wells Fargo would be responsible for into our project, and we would build it all at one time, so we're not going back in a second time and tearing up the road. With that, staff recommends approval of the development agreement and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Good presentation, good lowdown on that. Council, we have a motion on this item? See if there's a particular motion. Vice Mayor?
Approve resolution two thousand eleven dash thirty-eight, amending the development agreement between the Town of Fountain Hills and Fire Rock Plaza LLC dated March sixteenth, two thousand and six.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any speaker cards on this item, Bill?
No, Mayor.
All right, council, questions, discussion on item twelve? Councilor Elke?
Hey, Paul, what would be the costs? We don't, yes, the staff's opinion is we don't need a traffic signal there. What would the cost have been had Fire Rock Plaza put that in there, just ballpark, if you know?
Mayor, Councilmember Elke, the cross-access easement actually has it shown as about a two hundred and forty thousand dollar item.
How about the meandering sidewalk?
The meandering sidewalk is where the majority of the cost is, because you have to cross the wash. They're either, if we, if it's approved and we actually add it into our project, we'll have to design either retaining walls or modify the box culverts across the road. So I believe the actual sidewalk cost was approximately around a hundred thousand dollars, of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for construction.
So this, this is, the two hundred thousand dollars been paid for that meandering sidewalk, so we're not eating that cost, and then we wouldn't be putting a traffic light there anytime in the future, so we're coming out ahead about a hundred thousand, or fifty to a hundred thousand?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And then there's, you mentioned conduit.
Correct.
Under the road?
There'll be, our standard is for two, two sets of conduit. One would be for a future traffic signal, and one could be for, if there was a company that wanted to put fiber in, or if the town wanted to put fiber in for something, we would have a spare.
That'd typically be the, in this case, was it the property owner's responsibility to provide that?
Correct.
That's also a component that's being provided that we might need.
And there'll be some landscaping improvements as well.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. Any other questions? All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor five zero.
Thanks, Paul. All right, next item, we've got one presentation for items thirteen and fourteen. Thirteen is consideration of and possible direction to staff to authorize an unbudgeted general fund expenditure in the amount of twenty-eight thousand seventeen dollars, twenty-one cents to the Arizona Department of Water Resources, ADWR, for the annual municipality fee as established by the Arizona Legislature under ARS forty-five dash one-one-eight. Raymond? Raymond, how are you?
Good, thank you, Mayor and council. As you stated, the, earlier this year, the state legislature passed and the governor signed into law Senate Bill sixteen twenty-four, which is known as the Environmental Budget Reconciliation Bill. Sections two and seven of that bill authorize ADWR to assess and collect a fee from each municipality in the state. That fee can't equal more than seven million dollars, which is approximately the same amount that ADWR was, or defunded out of the state budget. The money that they were, or are going to collect is, is going to be used for planning, hydrogeologic studies and research, and on a more local level, the fees are going to be used to secure and ensure that Fountain Hills residents have safe and sustainable water supply for the next one hundred years. Chaparral City Water has a junior water right to the Colorado River, and they rely heavily on the Arizona Central, the Central Arizona Project, which is fed from the Colorado River. On August, in August of this year, ADWR filed with the Office of the Secretary of State notice of exempt rulemaking, which established those fees, and that, those fees are what was read earlier, that twenty-eight thousand dollars and change. On August of this year, the town did receive its invoice for fiscal year two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, and that was calculated in the manner that the ADWR rulemaking was, and that's based on the population of each municipality. We did have the ability to question or petition the calculations, but that was only based on a clerical error or some minor errors, but we did not do that. In October, the ADWR held their final rulemaking, and that was to establish the permanent fees for municipalities for two thousand twelve and beyond, and that went from twenty-eight thousand and change to thirty-one thousand plus dollars per year. So what is the risk if we don't pay for the, for the fee? Right now, the legislature has no direct enforcement mechanism. They're required to report to the state budget office, all municipalities that do not pay the fee, and also to the joint legislative office and to the office of the Senate President. With that, I am done with my presentation. I will answer any questions.
Thanks. Raymond, council questions? Or first, I guess, anyone from the public on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right, thanks. Any questions, or Vice Mayor?
Mayor, thank you. Raymond or Andrew, is there any action pending on this item from other municipalities, or anything that we can draw on? Obviously, the input at the time and during the rulemaking, the cities really, they asked questions, but they didn't really have any effect on this. Is there anything going on?
Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, the discussion lately has been twofold. One, for almost every municipality that has a water service provider incorporated into its municipal structure, they're passing the fee on to the customers and labeling it, you know, state required EWR fee, and they're moving on. Mainly, that position was taken because the League of Arizona Cities and Towns was concerned that, mainly because of the reporting requirements that Raymond issued, and you noticed that the people that were going to be notified are all the people that would potentially be in a position to cause legislative grief for those communities that decided not to pay this fee. For the most part, the League's concern held true in terms of everyone's determination of whether or not to move the fee forward and pass it through to their residents. The problem is that there are many communities in the state, smaller ones primarily, and some larger cities, that don't have their own water service. For those communities, there's simply no mechanism for which they can recoup the money and then, you know, pass it through to the users, as seems to be the state's method. And unfortunately, then that means that those smaller cities and towns without their own water service are the ones who are going to have to eat this fee. For a community the size of Fountain Hills, nearly thirty thousand dollars of non-passed-through cost is difficult to absorb. One community that we know of, a smaller city, is rejecting and passed a resolution to reject the bill and reject any payments may be made because they don't provide their own water. We know that others are talking about it as well. Just this week, I've been informed that there are some discussions ongoing with folks at the legislature that a tweak or amendment may be coming in this next legislative session to address those communities that don't have water service of their own. I don't know if that's going to come in the form of additional authority and then mandate to the private water companies to pass this through to their users, or if it's going to come in some other form of just an exemption to the communities that don't have their own water service. None of those details have been discussed, it's just been at thirty thousand feet at the moment that many of the state-elected officials are hearing from their constituents right now about this provision, and how their communities are required to eat the fee if they're not able to pass them along. The Town of Fountain Hills has no mechanism for passing this along to its constituents, even if it wanted to, because you don't provide water and you don't have any billing system by which you could do so.
Mayor, so not only are communities that have private or do not collect, but unincorporated areas of the state are not, there's no mechanism for them to be contributing towards this?
The statutory authority only allows ADWR to address the municipalities, and I think that's one of the shortcomings that's being discussed right now. So unincorporated areas, I believe, are not within the scope of this, as well as the communities that don't have water providers there.
Oh, okay. I have more, but go ahead.
Councilmember Elke?
With that being said, with the advice that Andrew has given, and I'm reading the bill here, and normally, you know, bills that we get at home, it says if you don't pay by this date, you know, you will be assessed late fees and other sorts of things, and my understanding, Andrew, just, there's nothing in the statute that says if you don't pay it by the due date, you get assessed an additional fee or anything along those lines?
I'm not aware that there is a penalty provision or an enforcement provision in here. The general concern was that when there's not a remedy, creative remedy is usually sought, and the creativity of legislature is not simply, not something that most municipalities are willing to engage in at this point.
With the discussion that there may be something creative coming out, or maybe some exceptions, I would hate to pay this and then find out that there's an exception later to those municipalities that don't charge for their own water. I'm not making a motion at this time, and I think it's something that we should consider tabling and waiting.
Councilmember Legay?
I was thinking along those same lines myself, and my question was, is there a due date for this invoice? Is there a billing due date?
Mayor and council members, yes, there is. It's January sixteenth, I believe, for the, for the final, there was two bills. One was for November, and the other one was for January.
Okay. So basically, we're looking at a twenty-eight thousand dollar unbudgeted expense that's been mandated, put upon us, and then it's looking like thirty-one thousand dollars for how long? For forever? And can that thirty-one thousand dollars increase as costs and projects go up?
Mayor and council, the fee, it can go up or it can go down, depending on what the balance is on ADWR's account is at the end. They can only hold seven million dollars in their account.
I understand that. Mayor, if I may, Andrew, how did we get here? I mean, how did we end up, end up here? Who paid this in the past?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Legay, every state agency in the past has been funded through the state legislature, and the typical appropriations process provided for funding for each one of the agencies that they have, much like the town appropriates for all of its departments. When the budgets became more difficult to balance, creative ways were sought to try and, and provide for services that are spread around the state. You know, ADWR does a number of different things that involve development in the state, you know, involves a number of different assured water supply tasks they do, or requirements that they monitor that cities and towns are required to go through, so they're, they have a very strong regulatory directive to what they do, and the entities they regulate are mostly municipalities and unincorporated areas. So I think the thought was that this is more of a fee for service, and it should be passed along to the users. Unfortunately, if we, if you don't have a water provider, it's not really a straight path for a fee, and the calculation method didn't really tie to the cost to the state to provide the service, much as we would consider in a typical analysis of whether it's a tax or a fee. And so I think it was just a very difficult budget time, looking for ways to fund agencies outside of the normal state budgetary process, and, and looking for another revenue stream, essentially.
Mayor, if I may, Andrew, you stated that there's possibly some action at the legislative level, taking a look, look at this, particularly for a town such as Fountain Hills that doesn't have its own municipal water company. Do you have any idea where that discussion is at, or priority, or is it just, anything tangible happening there, I guess is my question?
Mayor and Councilmember Legay, anything that's discussed in December prior to legislative session starting is mostly at the discussion level. And every now and then, there'll be a piece of legislation that's actually being crafted prior to the session starting. Most bills have some footing and are some ways down the road prior to January one. There's a lot of work done in the off-season as it is, but I haven't heard of that for this particular issue. Only in the most, in the last couple of weeks have we heard that there's any kind of movement afoot to maybe readdress the issue, and I don't know if it's gone much further than that. Typically, we find out when a legislator contacts the League of Arizona Cities and Towns or one of the municipalities to talk about it in depth, to try and get some technical expertise to draw from in order to do this, and I haven't heard of that level of discussion happening. It may very well have, but it hasn't made its way back through all the intergoves, which is, you know, the intergovernmental affairs officers of various cities and towns are kind of the, the rumor network that everyone learns of and learns about the progress of bills as they come along.
Is it possible to contact our state legislator to see if this thing has legs and see where it's at before we move forward on our--
Absolutely.
--motion here this evening?
Absolutely, and I think that's what's been going on to the extent that it's been discussed, and I think there's been some contact from various communities to their state representatives.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Cantino?
Thank you. Is it possible that we could just put this on hold till we're forced to do something? I don't think we should be paying out the money if it's going into a fund we don't even know what's going to happen to it.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cantino, you know, I would never advise that you violate a law, but I think it certainly is prudent of the town to table this issue until such time as at least you get to that January billing time to be able to see if anything has been introduced in the first couple of weeks of the legislature.
They're not going to be able to cut our water off anyways.
Let me give you a second. You mentioned some good things here. The Fountain Hills, the town, the government does not provide water service, so we don't, and we don't have a billing mechanism to flow through, and it's kind of by design that the town doesn't have a billing mechanism to bill for whatever we want to bill our citizens for from town hall. We don't have that set up. I think we like that we don't have that set up, should make our citizens feel more comfortable, but the state decided they could just send us a bill for their state agency, that there have been, that taxpayers at the state level have been funding, including our taxpayers, so, and more tax dollars are still obviously funding ADWR, but no more dollars were needed, so they want to come to the municipalities and have our taxpayers pay that additional amount. But the, along the same, similar lines, and I think this is a poor precedent, so I don't think we've ever considered anything similar to what the state's done here, is to start asking towns to fund state agencies' budgets. Are there any parts of our budget that we should be considering sending invoices to the state to help fund? I would never have thought of that before this came forward, but anyway, I think you guys' discussion is great. I was just curious on, one item that wasn't brought up is, was Senate Bill sixteen twenty-four. When it was created, I don't remember hearing any dialogue, really. It just kind of, it happened, and then we started hearing about the ramifications quite a while after the session closed, so, I mean, it would have been nice to have gotten some feedback at the time when we maybe could have affected the bill, but do you know, did it come through fairly quickly? Was the municipal invoice piece added at the end, or, you know, do you know, by chance, Andrew?
Mr. Mayor, in terms of when the bill came to its final form, I can't give you an answer on that. I do know that the League was engaged in discussion of this early on, well, whenever it was first introduced and discussed from that point, but I also do know, too, that last year's legislative session was not a time for the cities and towns to poke their head up on virtually anything. As you know, the number of local government-related bills passed through the legislature last year was extraordinarily high, even noted by the governor in her veto letters and in a couple of approval letters. So when the governor makes note that there's an extreme number of bills pointed towards local government from the legislature, that's a year in which the League thought it was best to not fight the fight. As you know, in the past, you know, it was either the last year or the year prior, a large chunk of money was attempted to be pushed down to the municipalities, significantly bigger than seven million dollars, and there was a lawsuit filed to fight that effort. That lawsuit then, from the League's perspective, resulted in backlash the following session, so I think that they were feeling a bit gun-shy based upon the mood of the legislature to apply their will towards local government and didn't want to pick another fight.
Okay, thanks, Andrew. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, thank you. And we're not questioning the activities of DWR. I think, you know, the, you know, what they do on a state level for water is, you know, necessary. I don't think we're looking at that, but to your point, Mayor, the, the strike everything amendment, where the language, which is, the language that's crossed out, that's saying that the funding for these activities comes from the state general fund, the language added, which says that the department can assess and collect fees from each municipality, and the state was added in the strike everything amendment by Representative Kavanaugh on three thirty-one eleven. So this particular legislative session was not one of those protracted ones as usual, and I think it was actually close to the hundred days, so three thirty-one was fairly late, and as always with the strike everything amendment, it doesn't go through the same vetting that a bill would go through, so if you look at in our packet what this bill is at the very beginning with all the sponsors and all, it was not that same bill when it came out and when it was discussed, and three thirty-one eleven is the date that I see that's on it. So, and to, I think it was Councilman Legay's point of contacting legislators, I think that we could do that if we wanted to, try to see something about how to take care of our town in the particular area that we have, which is that we don't supply the water to our residents, but even so, the idea that legislators take pledge not to raise revenues or taxes or fees to the state, the idea of actually taking that and being able to pass it on to residents isn't really that comfortable anyway. But I'm okay with waiting to see if something along those lines is something that's discussed, but I'm very okay with tabling it right now.
All right, so a lot of discussion on tabling. Do we have a--
Motion table.
--motion table?
Second.
Andrew, on this motion table, just have further discussion and then take a vote on the table?
Yep.
All right, any discussion on, any, any other discussion on this item? Councilmember Elke?
I just think it's important to make clear that we're tabling this for further investigation review, perhaps maybe staff communication with our representatives to find out if there's going to be an exception, and to-- going to be an exception, and to perhaps get some more information and clarification on this point.
And some clearly share with all of our legislators, the precedence of passing the state agency cost down to municipalities is, I think, a poor precedence. I don't recall seeing before.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the motion to table? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, five zero.
Thanks, Raymond.
Thank you, Mayor.
And item 14 is tabled as well, or do we need to make a motion to table 14, which is authorizing the budget transfer? First item was the unbudgeted expenditure from one to the other?
Motion to table.
Second. All right, any discussion on item 14? Any public comment cards on 14?
No, sir.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, five zero.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, item 15, council discussion direction, interim town manager, finance director. Nothing on that item. And 16, summary council request, report on recent activities, interim town manager, finance director, Julie Getty.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Some items to follow up council requests to, with the sonoran conservancy regarding the overlooked trail, to talk to Parks and Recreation and look at our policy for adopting trails and move that forward. Also, to communicate with the League or the legislature regarding any new legislation related to the ADWR. Recent activities, the staff has been preparing for the December 13 work-study session, where we're going to present the council with the five-year, proposed five-year capital improvement plan, as well as options for the pavement management program. Staff's also finishing up our year-end audit that will be presented to the council at the next meeting on December 15. And the town has purchased a booth at the PTO Holiday Boutique on Saturday at the middle school, and we will be there in attendance, and we will be giving out candy canes and water bottles.
Thanks, Julie. And thanks for being our interim. You're doing a great job. And the entire town hall's been decorated, I understand, by a volunteer, and did a tremendous job, as you can see here right before us. And I'm not sure, when will we tell if we're good or bad, and what's in our stockings? I guess that we have to wait till Christmas, the first meeting in January. All right, thanks, Julie. Look for a motion to adjourn?
Second. All right, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you much.